Okay, it is 6:30. I am going to call to order the first board meeting of the 2025-26 school year, and we're hoping it to be a great year of providing a quality education for each and every student. Please join me. Oh, I'm gonna back up and read the statement of public notice. Let's see. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board, and it's a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district, and additional copies were forwarded to the city and town of Cedarburg, as well as the News Graphic and Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, due to the republic for which it stands, one nation under all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Dr. Clark, the consent agenda, please.
All right, with regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from a regular board meeting on June 18, 2025, the budget and finance report, which includes the check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. I'll be providing an overview of the personnel report in just a minute. But I would like to highlight that within the report is a recommendation to hire Krista Penrod as the new director of instructional technology. Krista has worked in the Cedarburg School District for the past seven years as a digital learning coordinator. We are very pleased to present her to the board for consideration. In regard to the personnel report, we have had no professional employee separations this month, which is excellent. And as you can see there, besides Krista, we've hired four other teachers within the district: Catherine Colta, Summer Ketchell, Sidney Staub, and Priyana Fletcher. We've had a couple of internal transfers. We have had a couple of separations in the classified support staff, and hired a couple of other people for various positions.
Okay, well, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Before a motion, hold on. Hello? Hello? This is very awkward, sorry. Um, Dr. Clark, could you just explain a bit more for the, um, from the PERS side of things? Just what, if you could share what was shared with me about our numbers and PERS. I know there is concern about our numbers of paraprofessionals that's been brought up at our middle school. And if we could just have a little bit more context for the numbers and staffing, I think it would be beneficial.
Uh, I'm gonna look at Karen real quick. Do you remember how many PERS we had at Webster? Do you remember where it was for last, last year?
Yeah, it was with Angel Howard.
Sir, I apologize, I'm not prepared to answer that question now.
Uh, there's more reasons.
Yeah.
I wonder, Dan, do you know how many, uh, yes?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Okay.
Ken, that's our current number or that's last year's number?
I found, and I did this update, that's sometimes I'm a few years behind. Um, we had to open the relationship.
Thank you. Are those, are those throughout the district or? Okay, thank you. So I don't know who, I don't know who heard, if everybody heard you, so.
Yeah, there are fifteen, uh, current positions available at Webster, and we have six open, so looking to fill those six positions.
Okay, with that, I still entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The motion to approve the consent agenda passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. And Krista is in the audience, as she waves right there, so I told her I wouldn't make her speak. I just wanted to show a word to you, and we will, um, over the next couple of months, arrange times for each board member to be able to read the ver and get to know her a little bit better. All right, moving into superintendent's report. This evening, I have two brief reports for the board. The first is to acknowledge the strong relationship between the Cedarburg School District, the city of Cedarburg, and the Cedarburg Police Department. One component of this partnership are the two school resource officers, or SROs, that we have within the district. This school year, our SROs are Jake Bolt, whose office is in the high school, and Vlad Melnikov, whose office is at the middle school. We greatly appreciate the work these two men do and the support they provide to the district. The second report for the board is the ACT crime statistics report. This report is a new report, and this is the first year it has been required. It is part of the 2023 Wisconsin Act 12, and requires public high schools with grades nine through twelve to report certain crimes, such as homicide, sexual assault, burglary, robbery, or theft, battery, substantial battery, or aggravated battery, arson, use or possession of alcohol, a controlled substance, or a controlled substance analog, possession of a firearm in violation of statute, and violation of a municipal ordinance relating to disorderly conduct that occur on school or district property to the DPI by July 31 of the following year, and provide a report to the board. The crime statistics report for the 2024-25 school year is due to DPI by July 31, 2025. The report for the Cedarburg School District was submitted to DPI on July 9, 2025. Board members, a copy of this report is included in the Word docs.
Thank you. Now, we move to public comment. No one has signed up. Is anyone interested in speaking? All right, well then, we'll move on to recommendations, Dr. Clark.
All right, this evening, we will be presenting three recommendations to the board. The first recommendation is for the board to approve the 2025-26 CSD academic standards for the 2025-26 school year. In accordance with the Wisconsin Statute 120.1213, at the first school board meeting of the school year, the board shall include an item on the agenda to approve a notice that clearly identifies the student academic standards under Section 118.31G, A1, that will be in effect for the school year. The 2025-26 academic standards are the same as the 2024-25 academic standards. This recommendation is being forwarded to the full board for approval by the curriculum committee.
Do I have a motion? I motion to approve the 25-26 CSD academic standards for the 25-26 school year. I will second that. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a heads up, uh, is this even on?
Yep.
Okay. For 25-26 school year, there aren't any changes, but so that you are all aware, as a member of the state superintendent's academic standards review committee, the health education standards, which were last updated in 2011, will be significantly changed within the next year or two. The current edits are greatly different than what is currently being used, so that is going to be something that we're gonna have to take on shortly.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just had a quick question for Dr. Clark. Or, uh, was it, Ally, did you have, do you get the updates from the state on when changes are potentially being looked at? What does that look like from the district side?
Um, yes, I do receive updates. A lot of them come through several of the different listservs that I am a part of, and then also, um, I'm a part of different curriculum directors' networks across the state that also help to inform. Excuse me.
So I feel like I heard a board member share their perspective. Is it also your perspective that there's, that there would be an anticipation of change?
That's coming soon.
Yes.
And they're in the works.
When we're looking at soon, are we looking at a year or two years? I understand these are not, or my understanding at least, which is limited in the scope, is whether is the definition of soon?
I would say about a year.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Is what I'm generally hearing.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Okay, well then, I will, um, oh, let's see. I am going to, um, just move all in favor of approving the 25-26 CSD academic standards for the 2025-26 school year. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you.
All right. The next recommendation is for the board to approve Franklin Covey's Leader and Me resource for use at Webster Middle School. The selection of this resource is culmination of a year's long curriculum review process by the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Allie Rudich, Webster Principal, Dan Reiner, and various Webster Middle School staff members. This recommendation is being forwarded to the full board for approval by the curriculum committee.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the Franklin Covey Leader and Me resource for use at Webster Middle School.
Still moved?
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? I'd like to propose an amendment to that motion. A motion to substitute towards Franklin Covey's Leader and Me with Character Strong.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the Character Strong resource for use at Webster Medical School, correct? Middle School. Okay, any discussion on that?
Uh, yes, first, I'd just like to say thank you for a board member seconding. I would just, I don't know if this is conveying new information or just doing a lineup, but when you second something, it doesn't necessarily mean you're in favor of it, but it opens the floor for discussion. So I'm, I am personally coming from this from a few different perspectives. I think that while I greatly appreciate the amount of effort that's gone into the curriculum committee, the members of our district staff, I am very much struggling with pros and cons. My understanding was, at the start of this process, that Character Strong was purchased. It was implemented. There weren't complaints from our parents. Um, it was then paused, then it was restarted, with certain lessons falling within the matrix of Webster. And so that's a point there, with the caveat that then there would be opportunities for committee, the curriculum committee, to basically have a lot of different resources to look at. And so my understanding is that there were ten different resources that were more or less gone through a process of what could work well, and the top two were Character Strong and Leader and Me. I can only speak for myself, but for myself, as an individual who's not a member of the curriculum committee, not an alternate, and really only has the opportunity to give the majority of my feedback at this table where we all have equal roles, I am not seeing the cost benefit of Leader and Me right now versus Character Strong. And I do have a concern that if, well, I'll leave that there. Don't want to get in trouble with my wording. I am looking at this from the perspective of spending about twenty hours at this point, going through everything that's available to me as a board member for Character Strong and for Leader and Me. And my preference in thinking about the standards that are changing, in thinking about some of the federal funds that are at this point frozen, in thinking about our state budget and what money is available, what isn't, as well as a cost to implement something versus a cost to sustain something, I'm not seeing the benefit. So I, as a board member, would prefer that our district continue with Character Strong and the lessons that fit into the matrix. I'm gonna stop there for now, because I realize I said a lot, and it made sense to me, but I want to make sure it perhaps made sense to others.
So to chime in, um, I too have issues as well. Um, and a lot of them have to do with fiscal responsibility. So it is a fact that the health standards will be drastically changing within the next year or so. And Leader and Me does not fit what those standards will be. I think it would be irresponsible to take money that we don't know where it's coming from, who it's coming from, and invest in new content, training, time, effort that our faculty and staff and administrators could be putting into other things when, within the next year or so, it very well could be that we have to scrap Leader and Me and go with something else. We have had no complaints with Character Strong. It has already been given the Cedarburg edge at Webster. The staff know it very, very well. I think at the very least, we need to wait until those new health education standards come out, because the last thing we want to do is have to train our staff two years in a row on new things. And the fact that we don't know where this grant money is coming from makes me extremely nervous. And when it comes to what those new standards will be, the access that I have being on that superintendent's committee, you will be retraining once those new standards come out. I think it's better for us to stick with what we are currently using and then review it when those new standards come out.
Can you expand on how you're thinking that the, um, you, we based a lot of this on what the raw matrix is, and so how is the raw matrix related to the, um, health updates that may be coming in curriculum?
Well, the, the health education state standards, no matter what they are, the district has to adhere to all of them. So it very well could be that the raw matrix would need to change as well to meet those things.
So, but that doesn't, that doesn't really address the things that we found, that the staff really liked in this curriculum. And I understand you're not on the curriculum committee, Connie, but I'm not either, and that's a spot where all of this can happen, and I think it's beneficial to happen in that setting.
I will respectfully disagree. I think it's great that the committee that was looking at these curriculums found things that they liked. I'm sure they found things that they liked in all of them. But just because they found things that they liked doesn't mean it's fiscally responsible for us to jump into something when we have a program that has had no complaints, and we know full well that there are going to be changes coming down the pipeline that very well will result in us having to redo professional development and change the program. And because we've had no complaints, I see no issue with continuing for at least another year with Character Strong.
I want to back up. Connie, we learned of the impression that curriculum committee reviewed the ten possible curriculums, because we were totally removed from that. It was the committee at Webster that reviewed them. We didn't really see anything until a final choice was made.
I understand that, as I was present for that meeting. So I, I want to make a clarification, or again, just perhaps, I, I, I really do want to be mindful of how we speak to one another. At a committee level, several of our meetings have occurred, more or less, like a committee of the whole, which we are not. And my perspective of committee meetings is that those who are on the committee have the opportunity to speak, offer a vote. Those who are not on the committee, who are alternates, perhaps, uh, that similar scope. And then those who are board members who are not on the committee and are not alternates, to avoid being close to a committee of the whole, it really isn't best practice for everybody to be laying in. That is my understanding. However, at this board table, it is absolutely my job to bring up what perhaps I would say, if we were operating as a committee of the whole, which we are not. So I think we are perhaps operating with different perspectives on what those committee meetings could be or should be like. So just so everyone at this table is aware, I am operating from the sense of, if I am not placed on a committee, and I am not an alternate, and I am a board member attending a meeting, I will always do my best to afford the opportunity for committee members to speak first, alternates to speak, and then if I need to, if I feel there is absolutely something that can be laid in on, I'll weigh in then. But it is not my view that that, that my job should be to go to every single committee meeting that we have that I'm not even a member or an alternate on. That doesn't make any sense to me. So hence my saying, I respectfully disagree. I would also add that those committee meetings are not recorded. There is nothing for the community to go back and listen to, whereas these meetings are. So there is an opportunity for some more of that discussion to be available for prosperity.
Okay, well, I have a motion and a second to approve the Character Strong resource for use at Webster Middle School. Is there any further discussion?
I just have one thing to add. So just to clarify, Ally, it was quite a robust committee on Webster that was involved in this review and ultimate suggestion, and then we reviewed it at the last curriculum committee. Could you explain a little bit more, like, how many people were involved in that for Webster? What their roles were in this process?
Sure. For the actual review committee, it was myself, Mr. Reiner, the principal. We had both the counselor and school psychologist as a part of the committee, a teacher from every grade level, and a teacher from the elective courses that were a part of the core committee. We did the majority of the work, and then we also brought the results to staff in May, and sought feedback from staff in May regarding the resources.
And then it was the recommendation from this robust committee who had as their top two contenders, continuing with Character Strong or switching to this new resource, Leader and Me. And it was the strong recommendation, from my opinion, of being involved and hearing from them, because it came to two of our meetings, that this was a better option for Webster students and the skills that the school psychs and teachers thought that they could, that they needed improvement on, and needed some work on that. This had some unique characteristics to it that would be of a benefit to Webster students for Character Strong, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I heard some concerns about the finances. This is eleven twenty-five per student, and then there's a fifty thousand dollar over three-year grant, or can you?
That's where I was, I did misspeak. I was able to meet with the person who oversees the approvals of the grant. There is a fifty dollar per student. So the grant is based off of fifty dollars per student. That's the grant amount that is allowed for you, which we have been accepted for should it get approved, and for a minimum of three years. So depending on how we spend that, the only thing that it cannot go towards is the eleven twenty-five per student. It can go towards training, it can go towards development, it can go towards support, any of the materials, until that grant funding runs out. So if we do it within the first three years, then the grant's no longer available. If it takes four years to go through that, the wording was at minimum of three years.
And then Character Strong, correct me if I'm wrong, um, that was an annual fee that the district was paying for that. It was like, oh, we bought it, you know, X number of years ago, and it's just free for forever because we already bought it. It was an annual, yes, fee that, yes, we were paying for that. Okay.
And where is that annual fee for Character Strong?
Uh, last year it was about fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollars.
What does that come out to, Gush?
Yeah, six ninety-five, I think, maybe. There is a, there is definitely a cost difference. There are materials and resources that come along with Leader and Me that do not come along with Character Strong.
So what was the driving?
Oh, could I just ask that you speak at the mic? I'm having trouble hearing you.
That it was.
How's this?
Maybe go ahead, no.
It's like this?
Yeah.
Uh, so what was the driving force then for, um, you know, making the change from Character Strong to something else? Like, what, what was it about Character Strong that maybe wasn't, you know, filling the requirements that the school wanted?
So as we were going through the process, one of our first priorities is to make sure that all of the lessons are reinforcing our raw matrix at the middle school. Um, as we continue to refine that process and go through, um, some of the important things that we really wanted to prioritize, there were also additional conversations about how our students were showing up every day, and how we wanted to make sure that we were responding to them. Mr. Reiner and the staff also have a raw committee that was also having some conversations about some of the things that naturally come up regarding raw expectations, and a lot of the new themes were on supporting students with organization, executive functioning, um, time management, goal setting, some of those additional student behaviors that also relate to the matrix. And when we took the matrix and analyzed everything that was taking place within the building, that's the areas within each of the different grade levels of the matrix that were missing. And as we started to take a look at Leader and Me, we saw a little bit more of those types of skills and the support to teach those skills for students that can carry through in the academic classroom.
So you see this as a benefit for the students? In other words, if, if we don't move forward with Leader and Me, they're still, you know, struggling with the current?
We would have to find something to additionally support that, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ally, but this was, I mean, a lot of work was put into this by staff, and when we first started discussing this, we did look at the raw matrix, and, um, the committee has come back with a very detailed, um, piece by piece with the supporting resources, because it's not just Character, Leader and, Character, Leader and Me or Character Strong. There's like ambassador lessons, digital learning lessons, there's just a lot that feeds into this. And so I, this work just really spread into other areas to really get our raw matrix where, you know, you were comfortable with saying, this is what we're doing here.
Yes, the whole amount of time does incorporate more than just raw reinforcement, so we had to take that into account. But I think as we were digging in and looking at these types of resources and the conversations that were taking place around raw and setting the expectations, we continued to dive even deeper into that matrix to clarify what we're really looking for from students and how we can make sure that they can be their best selves at school.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that I'm making myself clear. Leader and Me is not going to fit the new standards for health education. So if we move to Leader and Me, we will be redoing this once those standards come. And that's going to make more work. And it's going to cost more money for professional development. I think it's irresponsible to do that when we could maintain the program that has had no complaints for a year, at least, until those standards come out, instead of making more work and then ultimately having to spend more money on adding things that Leader and Me does not cover. I really don't feel comfortable as a board member going with your opinion of what you think the standards will be. I'm not hearing anyone else in this room talking about what these standards are, and they are privy to, um, a lot of that information as well. I'm more comfortable going with the recommendation that was made by this Webster-specific committee, and as the updated, um, you know, guidelines or, you know, whatever is updated by the state, you can go from there. But at this moment, we need to make a decision on this curriculum, and this is what the Webster committee is recommending, is what they think is best for the students. It's within the budget, and I think that this is the better idea, unless we have these standards here, you know, written down, published, for us to really compare this to. I, I think we're just testing what those standards ultimately are going to be until they're released. So if it needs to be revisited, it needs to be revisited. But I don't feel comfortable saying no to this based on standards that nobody here has... But I don't feel comfortable saying no to this based on standards that nobody here has seen published.
So to be clear, the motion is not to say no to Leader and Me. The motion is to approve, like, if our board president would like to read back the amended motion, that would be perhaps beneficial. Sure. I'm sorry. I just have one quick thought. And I would just like to point out, it's a committee that made the recommendation. It's not a Webster team. It's a curriculum committee.
The committee made the recommendation after, I mean, the Webster Home and Resource Committee or group or, you know, group recommended this. We discussed it, and we agreed with them, and we brought it here for the full ROR discussion.
I don't think this can cave as finished. It's so, I'm going to just kind of gloss over this for a second. I've had enough training to let people speak over me. I can handle it. I don't love it, but I can handle it. I think, again, it would be helpful just for, Laura, if you could read back the actual motion to substitute, because I'm purposeful in what I say and when I say it. And I don't know that that's being understood at this table.
Sure.
Thank you.
So two, we had a motion and a second to approve the Character Strong resource for use at Webster Middle School. And so is there any more discussion on that motion and second?
Just to address what had been previously brought and brought up. No, none of you have access to those health education standards. I do, because I was appointed by the state superintendent to the Academic Standards Review Committee, and those are kept closed purposely. I'm doing a favor to the district by giving a heads up to let you know that this is going to put us in a bad situation if we approve this now and have to redo everything within a year. So no, you do not have access to those things because you are not part of that committee and weren't appointed by the state superintendent.
The last thing I would just say is, I did ask at the start of this meeting whether a member of our district is also privy to changes coming down the pipe. And the answer to that was yes.
And I do have the draft standards. I have been a part of meetings on the draft standards and what is potentially coming. I have been on Zoom calls so that I am making sure that I'm listening and paying attention fairly closely to what could be coming.
And I would, and I appreciate that, Ellie. What I would hope at this table is that individuals respect that I'm bringing this motion to substitute, because I've looked at the curriculum, the, excuse me, the resources for both. I'm also considering costs. I'm also considering this grant that I know a little bit more about, but not a ton. And that's why, and I don't think it was necessarily directly addressed, but if Leader and Me is not, if the second resource is not approved, we don't have anything. So I'm just putting this out there because to me, it seems like a a safe and valuable choice to make in this moment in time. Some of these different money pieces came about after members of the Webster team met. And I think it's absolutely valuable for those who are in the building to be talking about what's beneficial for students. I do think we also need board members who are paying attention to resources. And I don't know how lady those conversations were. So again, I, my motion to substitute is based on the reasons I've presented. I appreciate the second. I don't have more to share.
I have two things I wanted to ask. Ellie, if there are changes to the health curriculum that have been mentioned, would that be coming through the Webster Home and Resource time, or would that be addressed in a different way?
Depending on what the standards actually state, we would have to appropriately place where those are best placed.
Okay, so it's not a given?
It could be, it could be health.
Okay.
If we need, depending, depending on what the standards end up looking like and the expectations aligned with the standards, we would have to go back and determine what that would look like.
Okay. And then, oh, sorry. The other thing I guess I just wanted to address is I've heard this mentioned in the community, and I guess I just wanted to make sure that the correct information is out there. The district spent money on Character Strong in the amount of thirty-two thousand, and then again, in fifteen hundred for tier one and tier two purposes. And that's not what we're talking about here. That's going to continue to be used in the district for students who meet that criteria. And that's not, that's not money that's not going to be utilized.
Correct. So what we are talking about is the funding for the tier one resources right now. That is the annual subscription. The other purchases for Character Strong are for that tier two resources. Those have been purchased under a three-year contract.
Okay.
And so those will continue to be available.
What we're talking about is the annual license that we would be spending on Character Strong. We would now be putting toward Leader and Me.
Correct.
All right, so I have a motion and a second to approve the Character Strong resource for use at Webster Middle School. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion fails two to five. Did we have a motion on approving? Okay, we did have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. So now, is there any further discussion to approve the Franklin Covey's Leader and Me resource for use at Webster Middle School?
I'm going to think through this for a moment here.
Connie's thinking. To answer Kate's question from earlier, the majority of updates that are being made and things that are being extensively added to health education fall directly into social emotional learning. So yes, this would need to be updated significantly.
But I recognize we have a motion and a second on the floor at this point in time. Laura, could you just read back the motion as it stands right now?
Sure. Approve the Franklin Covey's Leader and Me resource for use at Webster Middle School.
I think I'm going to take a little bit of liberty on how we put Robert's rules to use here and just kind of ask a couple of questions if it's all right, because I'm not sure that there's a friendly amendment in here. Actually, I'm sure there isn't a friendly amendment, and the motion to substitute wasn't accepted. But I do have, if, I don't know if board members have the availability to open up the Q and A doc that had been put together with different questions from board members. Ellie, thank you very much for convincing. You will see, board members, board members will see several questions that were asked, and it's noted as being asked today. Those questions were not asked today. They've been asked over the course of last week or so. And for me, it is, it's easier to call and ask because I do have many questions about these resources. I am wondering for the, if board members would look in that doc, if you have a chance, there's modules that are in Leader and Me. And those modules are ones that I really have concerns about the age appropriateness of. So I know that's something that has come up in the curriculum committee and at the board table for many things. So I'm wondering what kind of guardrails there are for making sure the modules that are used, potentially used in Leader and Me, because the ones that I asked about specifically were not discussed. I do have a concern. I don't know if they fit in the ROR matrix. I don't know if they would even be utilized. And as of right now, as I mentioned previously, I've spent many, many hours on this. So I'm not, I'm coming to the table as someone who's looked at the backend. Anything available digitally, I've looked at. Anything available with the potential workbooks, I've looked at. Anything available for the teacher side of things, I've looked at. And I have some real concerns about Module Ten and the overarching mission statement exercise. However, I don't know that there's precedent for a board to say you can't use certain lessons, certain modules. So I'm perhaps asking, you know, fellow members of the board, if you had a concern about the age appropriateness of some of this content. And I'm not talking a sentence here or there, but I'm talking about lessons that are incorporated in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. And although we are talking about the elementary level, the digital access that was available to every board member does go into the elementary level. So you can see that, right? So if I'm not comfortable with that content for a sixth, seventh, and eighth grader, what, how would I as a board member know whether this is going to be part of our, part of what Webster does? Right. Thank you, Paul. Sometimes I can be short, sometimes, not often. But that's a real concern for me, right? So I, as I was taking time to think through if there's a way to make this motion, or excuse me, make an amendment to the motion that allows there to be, allows the board to know which modules are used and which are not. That's kind of what I'm thinking through.
At this point, there isn't a way to know because that's something that the committee hasn't fully worked through. The board always has the option of, in their motion, adding that they don't want a module or a chapter or something of a resource used. So that's something that the board could do. Otherwise, the normal procedure is, once the resource is approved, the committee will go through a complete scoping sequence, which would then lay out the individual modules being used. Always at that time, once the board looks at it again, the board can do whatever they want to in regard to that. That's certainly something that could come up again, and a motion be made at that time, too.
And that's something that we normally do, right? Like, we have?
No, normally, normally, resources are approved, and that's, that's it.
I thought there was like supplemental information that goes into some of the resources. If it's not, it doesn't have everything that?
Generally, what the board has done, at least in my time here, the teams get together and they look at that material. And then based on what our, what the teams understand the appropriateness of it, they will either use it or not use it. That usually does not come down from the board.
And I think traditionally, you know, like, for example, when we review a history book, we as the curriculum committee, we do not read the entire book and say, we don't want this paragraph or this chapter. I guess it's, it's a resource. It's not that we're adopting every word in that textbook. And we've always talked about adopting it according to the Sederberg standards. And that's what I'm assuming will be done here as well, that once the team is looking at these, you know, lessons and what will fit into this matrix best, to trust that you will for sure make sure they're age appropriate and so forth.
Yes.
There was, and maybe this is what you're referring to, Paul. I believe that two years ago in the history, when we adopted that, there was some supplementary material that the board didn't want us to use because of, you know, want to change so quickly, not time for people to review.
So, thank you, Dr. Clark, and Laura as well. I just want to, I want to make sure I'm understanding this. When the curriculum committee met last, prior to this meeting, am I misunderstanding you? Did curriculum committee members look through each of the workbooks, each of the teacher guides and access and look through what was available for all board members in relation to Leader and Me?
I'm misunderstanding.
Yes, I did provide access and hard copies of the materials.
Yeah, I understand that access was provided. But I think a comment that was made that more or less said it wouldn't be the committees. I don't want to put words in your mouth, Laura. I want to make sure that I'm understanding you correctly. And when you're, when you were making the, kind of the Sederberg way and whether things are age appropriate or not, if I as a parent of a seventh grader who's familiar with SEL, which is, this is SEL, and different kinds, and as an adult who's aware of, let me just pause here. I feel my, my concerns about the age appropriateness of a specific module is warranted. And what I was trying to understand is whether there is a precedent for a board member to make an amendment to a motion that would make it so that the modules that I have concerns about are not part of the discussion of whether it fits with the ROR matrix or not. Does that, does that make sense? So?
You can make that amendment.
So I'm going to do my best with the wording here. I'll, I would like to make an amendment to the original motion that removes the modules that are related to creating a mission statement from the Leader and Me resources. Is that reasonable?
Can you repeat that?
No, I can't, unfortunately.
I apologize, Laura. I have removed modules related to creating?
The mission statement.
What was it that you found objectionable about them? I'm just curious.
Sure, so I feel I've already shared that. But when I'm thinking through what's appropriate for different ages and when I'm looking at the videos that are available, which there are a lot of different videos for this particular section, I personally looked at them and did not, did not feel a sixth, seventh, or eighth grader would understand what was being conveyed through those videos. There's also, and maybe you know this offhand, Ellie, but there's, here. I feel like I've been talking a lot. I think I'll leave it at that for now and see if our board president has what I, what I was trying to communicate as an amendment.
I have removed modules related to creating a mission statement. I'm not sure if that's what you mean. Remove modules related to mission statement building would cover it, yeah.
Statement building.
Remove modules related to mission statement building. All right, so that's your motion?
Or amendment.
Yes, may you say it.
Do we have any discussion on that amendment?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so now we can have discussion.
Okay, I'll just share something as I, I did have a age appropriateness question on one of the lessons. Myself and I had raised that at the curriculum committee meeting. So as a, I chair that, as an individual board member, my opinion is that the best place for a really robust discussion on the nitty-gritty details of a particular piece of curriculum is at that kind of, is at the curriculum committee meeting that we had almost reached one. Not that a board member can't share a concern, feedback, too. That's totally fine. It's my opinion that that one, if you have questions and you know of them before that meeting, come to that meeting. Great. Any board member can come, share, ask questions, give feedback on what they reviewed. Every board member had access to that, obviously. Anyways, I had a question on the age appropriateness of, I think it was a seventh grade lesson, and it had kids sharing how, something about, it mentioned a student breaking up with his or her significant other. In seventh grade, across maybe a boyfriend, a girlfriend, a significant other. The board felt a little bit adult to me, and I said it sounded a deal breaker for me, but I, that was the one thing that stood out to me. And one of the Webster staff members was there and was like, yeah, we, I don't think we would present, you know, we would look at that, decide if that lesson would even be in it, you know, change that question on for something else. But it sounded like the staff was pretty well-equipped with, you know, looking at the broad view of all of the lessons and then handpicking the ones that are going to be best for the Webster students and ensuring that they're age appropriate. So I think it's definitely fair to question the age appropriateness of, you know, one slide or one question in there. But I tried to take a step back and look at the big picture of it. You know, do I see enough value in moving forward at the middle school level and as a board member? I do.
And just to follow up, there is a lot of material there that we don't not be utilizing, so. We're not utilizing.
There's more there that we probably could use.
Okay, well, I have a motion and a second to remove modules related to mission statement building from the Franklin Covey Leader and Me resource. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Abstentions? That motion fails two to five. So we will move back to the original motion, and I'm going to log back in. I'm sure I have it. And that is a motion to approve the Franklin Covey's Leader and Me resource for use at Webster Middle School. All those in favor? Still want to go back to that question? Okay. Okay.
Any discussion?
I would make a motion to refer this item back to committee. If someone wants a second, feel free, but I would second that. Thank you. So again, a second doesn't necessarily mean someone's going to agree with this. But if board members go back into the question and answer document, the, there were specific questions about not just a sentence in a lesson, which is what I believe Elizabeth you're referring to. You had a concern about a sentence in a lesson and wording in that sentence. My concern is about modules that are incorporated in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So as a board, we don't have the opportunity to know whether something's going to fit into a ROR matrix or not. And I have a concern that this is not appropriate. I will reiterate that my view is that the best place I can advocate for what I believe is important is at this table. But if people are insistent that those views should only be shared in a committee meeting, then I will ask that this go back to a committee meeting.
Okay, so your motion, let me confirm, is to remove the Franklin Covey Leader and Me resource back to, to refer the Franklin Committee Covey Leader and Me resource back to committee?
Yes.
And I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this?
I'm personally against that as I believe it's in the best district to move forward with it so that training can begin and professional development can begin for staff because they would want to be implementing this in the fall. This is not the first time that amendments have been made to request that items be removed from materials. I made several requests and amendments to remove harmful and indoctrinative material from Amplify, and those two were shot down as well. Unfortunately, that content is still in our district.
Okay, is there any further discussion? So just so that I'm, can you, right now, we have a motion and a second, correct, Laura?
Correct.
And we're in the discussion phase. I, you know, I can tell the trajectory of this meeting. So what I'll leave on here is that there is no point in time where I have been against social emotional learning and resources that are available for all of our students. I've heard at this table that, don't worry, you've got tier two, tier three. I think there's value in having tier one, two, and three be same for many reasons, which I believe I've shared at this table. I do appreciate the work that has gone into this, but I would also like us to acknowledge that there's many other grades in our district that have actually asked for this. And this was not an ask at the middle school for our parents. This was not a, something that was baked into our budgeting. And I have concerns about, yes, the module and the budget, but that does not take away from my desire to see social emotional learning continue. And I am glad to see it's not as much of a bad word anymore. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I agree. I'm extremely disappointed. There were no complaints about Character Strong. So to push this through as fast as it has been while still leaving the elementary schools without SEL is disappointing, especially when approving this is going to cost us more money in the long run and more wasted time with training and changing standards. So while I am in full agreement with us having SEL throughout all of our grade levels, I won't be voting for Leader and Me.
All right, so I have a motion and a second to remove the Franklin Covey Leader and Me, or to refer, I keep saying remove, that's what I wrote down, I'm sorry. Refer the Franklin Covey Leader and Me resource back to committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Abstentions? That motion fails two to five. So we go back to our original motion to approve the Franklin Covey's Leader and Me resource for use at Webster Middle School. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
So if, so if this is approved, if this goes through, Ally, could you go through the timeline for receiving this, the professional development implementation, and when the board would be apprised of which modules are used and which are not?
So if this is approved, I need to reach back out to Franklin Covey. I have 30 days from today to accept the grant and begin the process. That process will then be determined with trainers as to when things can be trained. I don't believe we will be trained by the first day of school, but we are working to find some training time, potentially that first October Professional Development Day, to make sure that staff is trained. And once we are assigned our trainer and our coach, we will be working through the process to identify which lessons we need with our team. And part of the communication will then, we can, I can communicate wherever needed as far as what we are going to be using for lessons. That will also be communicated to families in advance, along with information on this program and what's available. And then there will be weekly communication in the principal newsletter about what's going on.
And just with any other resources, parents do have, parents or caregivers have an option to opt out of any current lessons?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yep, just for the grant money. I realize this was answered in part at the last curriculum committee meeting, but I just would like the public to be a little bit more aware as they don't have necessarily access. I don't think they have access to the Q and A doc, right? Is that just for board or is that public?
I believe we moved it to public today.
Okay, great. So I would just encourage members of the public to look at that document. It has, I think, helpful questions that were asked by board, different board members without it saying who asked what. So I think that is, would be helpful. The, but going back to this grant money, it is an anonymous donor who gave money to Franklin Covey to be used for these resources. And the board does not know and will not know who this donor is. And should this donor's money run out, what happens?
So what they have told me is that with being approved for the grant, the money is earmarked for that time. So we have it, provided we have the resource. The money is already in their bank account, if you, for that time. So what they had said is if there's anything that continues beyond, they can't guarantee beyond that three-year funding, that if I were to want to apply for another grant, that that money would still be there from that grant.
Okay. So do we have it as guaranteed for the amount of time that we have?
Those three years.
Correct. A minimum of three years. So basically, until we run out of the money. Would it be possible, is it, so for fellow board members, I'm used to seeing the grant application process from a nonprofit side and from different levels of government side. And usually, there's a lot more information available, meaning what the, what the requirements of the district are, whether we're tracking things or not, whether we're relaying what we're tracking back to Franklin Covey. And I don't see any of that. So that is an area that I'm not super comfortable with. Is it possible or allowed for you to share the information that the rep from Franklin Covey has given to you with board members?
Yep.
Okay. So just so everyone's aware, I understand that Ally was doing her job and having those conversations, but prior to being at this table, I don't have that information. And I feel I've made it very clear that my concern with this, one, was the age appropriateness of that particular module. Secondly, or I think I brought up first, the funding. So right now, I'm not comfortable with Leader and Me without knowing whether those modules are going to be incorporated into the ROR matrix and without seeing what those constraints, if any, are on that grant money. So just so all, we're all on the same page here at this table, that's where that's at. Thank you.
So do we have a contingency plan if that donor is identified and the district would rather not have associated with that donor or taken that money? Do we have a contingency plan or a statement on that? Because that is a real concern I have about taking money from an unknown entity.
So I think it would also depend on where we are in the process. If that were to end up happening, I, at this point, this is something that's planning on coming from my budget. So if I know that there's something that I need to do to make sure that that is being taken care of, I will be working within my budget to do that.
Okay, well, we have this motion and second to approve the Franklin Covey's Leader and Me resource for use at Webster Middle School. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Abstentions? The motion to approve the Franklin Covey Leader and Me resource for use at Webster Middle School passes five to two. Thank you.
All right, the last recommendation is for the board to approve the following donation, $15,000 from Lockheed Martin to support the Sederberg High School robotics program. It's the only donation for July, so the total donations for July are $15,000. And since this is the first month of the new school year, the year-to-date donations would be $15,000, provided the board makes sense.
I will entertain a motion to accept the donation. So.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. So now, okay, we are moving on to the committee delegate representative liaison reports. And we have Dr. Silvaggio here to give us an update on the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting that was held June 25th of 2025.
Okay, as Laura said, Buildings and Grounds met on June 25th. We don't meet often, so this is a long one, bear with me. We received updates about the replacement of the failing CHS air handling unit. The engineering and planning are done, and we have one quote. They're currently waiting for two additional quotes. Lead time on a new air handler will be 22 to 24 weeks. We received an update on the summer work. The phrase mowing of the varsity softball and soccer fields was completed on June 17th. Everything went well. The grass will be playable again soon, which is exciting. The resurfacing of the JP tennis courts will begin after summer school ends and will take about two weeks. And the replacement of the east canopy roof at Webster is set to follow a similar timeline. Director of Buildings and Grounds is gathering information on companies that could conduct a facility study to help his department better understand the conditions and needs of our district facilities and assist with long-term planning. We heard about the planning for a project to update and improve the functionality of the Webster food serving line. That planning process is underway and work is expected to start in the summer of 2026. The committee received an update about the district's natural gas rate. Committee discussed locking in prices for longer than one year. And finally, we heard information regarding the solar arrays on the CHS roof. This solved the mystery from a previous board meeting. Turns out that there are actually two units on the CHS roof, two arrays. One is on the field house roof, and that unit is currently functioning well. It will stay. The second array is on the science wing roof, which is considerably older, and it is no longer operational. It will be removed and properly disposed of this summer at no cost to the district. And that's all we have.
Thank you. And I will hear from Elizabeth Sherlin on the curriculum committee meeting that was held July 9th, 2025.
Yes, we discussed three items. First was the notice of the 25-26 academic standards, which we voted on this evening. Those are in Word docs under that meeting and in this meeting and also on the district website. Next, we discussed an update on the Sederberg High School Algebra Geometry Pilot. Two pilot resources have been selected, LeBlanc Hill Reveal and Savas Envision, and those will be piloted this coming school year with the goal of selecting a new resource for the following school year. So not this school year, but the following school year. And finally, we had a discussion on the Webster Middle School homeroom resources, which we discussed in detail this evening. Really, it was an opportunity for any board members who attended to ask questions on the recommended resource, Leader and Me, and we voted on that this evening as well. And our next meeting is going to be Tuesday, August 5th.
Thank you. And last, we have Connie Kincaid, who is a WASB delegate, and she would like to give an update.
Thank you. I kept it to a one-pager. The last time it was a two-pager, and I'm doing my best to be more succinct when possible. So if this does not have as much detail as board members would like, as always, reach out to me. I'm happy to give more detail. But what's going to be available on the minutes? Thank you, Brenda, for getting that together after this meeting. It's just a quick update for July 16th, which covers the Summer Learning Symposium, which was held on July 11th and July 12th. It also covers professional, a professional development update. I gave a professional development back in April. So this is a follow-up from what's gone on since then. And then in April, I also shared some communications. So I did similarly for this, this month. I think, I want to point out just a couple things. So for under professional development, for the Learning Symposium, board members, at the end of each of, at the ends of these tables, there's the booklet that was available to anyone that went to the symposium. So if you'd like to take a look at what each of those offerings were, they are available to you at either side of the table. I attended eight of those, as well as the optional dinner. There was no cost for that dinner. I'm not seeking reimbursement for it. In addition to attending in-person events, I also reviewed materials for four sessions after that symposium. And those are now open to, my understanding is it's open to any board member. We have, one member of the district went to this, but everyone should have access to those materials now. So just, so we're all aware, one person going does not mean only one person has access. For professional development, there was a deadline of June 30th where board members can log all of the various webinars and things that they attend, and it goes towards basically certificates of achievement, which many people don't care about. I think they're helpful. I like professional development. So I did log all those in time. I have details about that that are available. Board members, there is a level one to level five of basically how much you can do professional development-wise. I anticipate receiving level three, which I'm grateful that you have a lot of resources that I can learn a lot from. I do also like sharing gratitude for people that put together these events and in having positive discussion with delegates. I also had the opportunity to speak with our Region 15 director, so that's included. And then after the symposium, a request from WASB is to fill out a survey that basically shows what you thought of each of these different sessions and any other feedback that you have. So it's not detailed in this one pager, but I did fill out a, all of my thoughts. So I'll take that for what it is. And then kind of in another column, I don't think I had another the last time, but I thought it was cool. I was asked to participate in the Q and A section of the WASB School News Magazine. So this is the magazine that goes out to board members from around the state. And I do have those questions. I look forward to answering them, and I appreciate that they, they asked if I was interested. So that's all I have for everybody. But like I said, this is one page, not two, and I'm happy to answer any more questions outside of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I will take, entertain a motion to adjourn. So, so I could, motion and a second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. We are adjourned seven to zero. Thank you, everyone.